Okay, I'd like to open this meeting with the first public hearing Northeast Lobster Company, I'll see doing businesses, the Northeast or 10 Huntington Road, Northeast Harbor request for special amusement permit. Pickets. Any comments, questions?
Move the father can be close regarding these lobster company.
Second back.
All in favor? Any opposed? Item B, public hearing on May second, twenty twenty-three town meeting proposed on articles for appropriation of funds ordinance amendments and ordinances. Note land use zoning ordinance articles had public hearings on two eight and two twenty-two, twenty-three. Comments?
Public hearing regarding May two, two, twenty twenty-three town meeting.
Second back.
All in favor? Thank you. Eight minutes, I would certainly through most you approve the minutes of February thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
So move second.
All in favor? And I will accept the motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Yeah, good. All in favor?
One abstention, please.
And then one extension. Okay. And I think that we can skip to the consent agenda and then right after that, I think we're going to do the M D E S budget, all right? Okay, so consent agenda, item A, department reports highway, item B, short-term rental discussion letter from Brendan McPeak. February twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and item C Hancock County Commissioners Meeting Minutes for February seven, twenty twenty-three.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now I would like to move to under new business, item C, N D E F budget review. Hi.
And I'm so happy to be here. This time last year I came to share about our school and I had fallen on the ice a few days before. And this was my last public appearance for about a month and a half. So I'd like to formally apologize for Zer off here, but we're back and that what I'd like to share with you can just keep going through these photos. Um, I don't have any facts or figures on there. I'm going to just share information with you. I do have information here to share, but um. Boy, it's so great to have our school open again. That said photo from us clearing the sidewalks and driveways at five thirty in the morning. That's our service promise, our district service promise. Our whole district works to interrupt educational one equities and grade schools, so which every student provides one conversation at a time. So we have taken that to heart at M D E S and we're having all the hard conversations. And we work super hard to balance programming for our students that embraces the arts, music. Uh, it's our foreign language, which is Spanish physical education. There's our curriculum director Julie Kowlinski. I said, I am short staffed and she was over at my school in ten minutes teaching kindergarten. And um. It's just been a great collaboration. So our school works really hard together to balance academics. Making sure students are getting the supports that they need and they're also being able to experience just the beauty of our island and be in immersed in field studies or Ranger live programs or art programs, I feel trips are students are on photography field trip. This, you never know what's going to be a hole for students to be in school for some of its art programs, some of its foreign language, some of its bacteria. But our school doesn't report. There are six graders at sea camp. It rained all the time, but boy, weren't we happy to be on scooter in that about world again. Um, there's Halloween, we have our, our community parade every year too. I'm really proud of the work that we do at our school. There's our eighth grader leaders. Yeah, I'm a lookout for them. There's twenty-five of them. They're pretty bad. Um, I know, right? I'm really proud of the workers at your school. We are working hard to find that balance between their, to see how the social emotional learning plays into academic learning too. And so we have tough conversations and where I was working to improve what we're doing. Community has been our big draw this year. We have gathered once a month as a whole school at school meetings. There's the sixth grade, super happy. They won the estimation from me by guessing. How many marshmallows were in the jar? They're only one off. Um, our students have also done community service this year. They have community days. And some of our seventh and eighth graders infiltrated the cafeteria, which is opening down this year and help prepare lunch. Our garden is thriving. Patty Kelly is a fifty percent garden coordinator, fifty percent ed tech. Um, a little bump up in the number of hours for her in the summer this year because you guys are some large, right? Yeah, it's worth it. Um, look at how happy those children are. Um, this Patty has got a green thumb, two green thumbs. And our garden is just a successful program. So bumping up her time from ten hours, fifteen hours in the summer to help maintain the garden. Again, we're just living life this year on Joy Road and all over the place. Now that we're able to move about the state, there's Miss Sharp with the fourth graders, State House. We have gone on trips all over the place, which has been wonderful. And music has returned. There are some of our musicians playing some on holiday music to welcome our kids on the last day of school before break. Um, it has been wonderful. Going through to have our concerts back to have people in the school. There's our, their band from the Halloween parade. Uh, and I wish you could hear this, but it's lovely. And um, Heather brought students downtown for Community Night down here and they played music in that museum too. I just didn't want you to go through those. So if we talk about some numbers too. So we retired our debt service last year, which was two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And so we do have a priority list of work that needs to be done at our school that has been deferred. Um, due to COVID, it is based off of an assessment that was done in two thousand and seventeen by the much larger architects. And I'm running record of all the work that we've done, but there's some pretty big things that need to happen at our school in order to make sure we take care of it. And we're being a little more energy efficient. And so we've contracted with, you know, a good little bit about this part.
Sure. Well, we're working on process of contracting with Black Architects, which we had RFP that went out. And there were a couple of architects that responded and what was the one that we decided to go forward with. And so we include that as process next step with the, with the committee. And so right now we're negotiating that contract with Black Architects and we're looking at what we can do and accomplish with this current fiscal year funding that we have, because we did what? Thirty thousand dollars towards this process in our current fiscal year and then look at what our next step are for next fiscal year. The intent is to get the groundwork laid for them to understand the kind of environment that we're looking at. We want them to be looking at windows and insulation, M A compliance. There's deferred maintenance that's needed. And we want to focus on and that their next phase two, so phase one would be this first thirty thousand, we're looking at an initial payment documenting existing conditions, evaluation of systems codes, procedures, and evaluation of facilities and program. Do that in the spirit a little bit and try and have that completed to go to phase two, which would be in the next fiscal year. And that's what's being proposed in the budget. We've moved that two eighty-five that had been debt service into its capital, capital outlay. And a portion of that would go towards this phase two of the contract with the architects. And some of what would be going into that is concept design and finding some proposals and then also cost estimated particular projects so that we can come back with an idea of what projects might cost us in reasonably good, so that we can understand at that point what we might want to propose for further work in a phase three. And some of those projects that we're going to be looking at are, again, windows. Um, the shed that's quite out of date and undersized. We have multiple little shed buildings that are adjacent to Gilpatrick Road, trying to consolidate that into one building and provide for the way in which the space is used as a community resource during non-school hours as well, so that we have restroom facilities there and water stations. Also looking at the insulation in the walls, that's what we're able to do that. We have a lack of A D A compliance in many of the rooms for the sinks and the, and the bathrooms that are in the younger kids' rooms. So looking at that, the upstairs room bathrooms could use updates as well. We'll come back with more detailed cost estimates so that we can know quite well, hopefully, how we would approach this next round of budget after this. Some of the money that's in capital outlay is going to go directly towards projects that we know we need to do. The bleachers are quite old and are really due to be replaced. They're overdue to be replaced and bleachers are not cheap. So that takes up a chunk of that. I think there's another one that.
Yeah, and then we have up in our gym, I think, from when the high school was there. And so it's time. When we have performances on the stage too, it takes quite a bit of effort to.
They're.
Yeah, and they're.
I don't think I know. Yeah. So picking on a few of the things that are from that Zelandor report are things that we just know we need to do, use a portion of that two eighty-five towards that. And then another portion of it would be towards this architectural contract, our contract for professional services with the architect to be able to come back with real ideas of what these things might cost us going forward and needs and prioritize that list. So that's what we're intending with that. That portion.
But our school currently is serving one hundred and fifty-four students. Like I said, we've got twenty-five eighth graders and we have twelve pre-k students. And they're so cute and so happy. And they are there full day. They're by the buses to school and home, most of them. And they have lunch at our school, they have snack at our school and naptime. Um, and it has been just a wonderful addition to our program and a great service to our community. Um, it's really just delightful. And Abby Harmon is our future teacher. Um, you've heard a little bit about M T S S recently through the A O S ninety-one who's talked about that. Multi-tiered system supports is how we support our students who are needing extra support in learning or maybe some more challenge. And we have a robust M T S S team at our school of a coordinator, Marissa Simpson, and then interventionist, your specialist in technology and our school counselor and behavior specialist, our literacy specialist and math specialist. We meet every other week and, and review goals and think about next steps and our specialists go to team meetings and they consult with teachers, they do observations and think why interventions to students that are in the most need of interventions. Um, and they train and work with ed techs to support ed techs in the classroom, just supporting learning too. I'm really proud of this program and the work that all of the folks on the M T S S team have been doing currently. Um, we have sixteen percent of our population identified as special education students, which I'm pretty proud of. So I just wanted to make sure that you know, uh, we work hard to keep our budget physically responsive to, to the community. Um, I do know it's significant, but I'm standing up here and it could be more proud of the work that's happening in our school, our students. I'm not being a sort of.
I have a, I have some questions about the, the, the architectural investigation and plans for the building. I mean, it's very, it, there's a lot going on around the island and if I'm not mistaken, all the individual school districts, including the Mount Desert School District, will be voting to, to get on board with, with an application process to consolidate. And under the, a couple of weeks ago, the, the, a list of potential plans for consolidation was shown in the paper and none of those had little kids in your building. Um, and I know Bar Harbor is in it. That's not my concern, but they've got a huge issue too. And, and we're, we're talking about a relatively small amount of money spent on things like ADA compliance, making sinks lower and bad and toilets more appropriate for kids that aren't going to be there. If, if all goes according to the plan of the A O S and I just, I have concerns about that. I wonder what your thoughts are.
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's something that we've talked about at the board level. Exactly. Right? And so as we go through this process, there's work that needs to be done to maintain our facility and to reduce energy costs while being mindful of that unknown that you just spoke of. And so really making decisions that we can make for the greater good of the building without. Um, so that we're able to adapt to whatever the uses for a building in the future.
Yeah, I mean, that is part of the prioritization process that I think we need to go through when we're about this point next.
Yeah.
Just a little bit earlier. We have some reasonable cost estimates that we can fairly trust.
Right.
And then look at what those are. So when you're talking about leaking windows, that doesn't matter what's happening going forward, right?
Absolutely. That's not what I'm asking about.
Easy one. Start prioritizing things. If ADA compliance or relatively low sinks in classrooms where it's geared towards little kids, doesn't necessarily make sense. Hopefully we'll have at least some sense of that at that point and that'll help us. Or maybe that's one of the things that gets done later in the process so that we do have the ability to react and adapt to what changes might come. So we, we can, we can work our way through that where if we have time as we're going through.
Understood. I guess I just my only, again, my, my comment, which was I, I made once before. Um, you know, it's our job to watch out for the taxpayer dollars and we appreciate the efforts that you guys do to be proud of your building and proud of what you do. But to see the exact amount of the debt services retired be added to that, just as the appearance of that is, is really not ideal for us to defend unless it's really well justified. That's all. And it concerns me that that amount is exactly the same. I'd almost rather have it be more by five thousand dollars so that more people didn't pick up on it. It's like, oh, I see what we're doing.
They're not considered together as this process went through, as you know, I mean, it's just right, but it just, it's a coincidence in terms of that.
Okay. Thank you.
But you know, that carrying that forward, we are looking at the herd maintenance.
And nobody's arguing with insulation and leaky windows. But anything that can be pushed off until we know what we're looking at in the next five or 10 years, and especially with the amount of money that this town has spent on the fire department and other things, taxpayers are really up in arms. Thirty percent or more increases in property tax per year. And it's a, it's a snowball and it's not just in this town, but it's, it's, it's a concern.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Lincoln Milstein. Could the speakers identify themselves? It's not clear who's speaking. I know, I know Jeff, I know Jeff. Who are the other speakers who spoke?
I'm Gloria Delcindio. I'm the principal at M D E S.
I'm Brian Henkel, Chair of the Montezar Elementary School Committee.
Uh, so I'd like to ask, is Brian Henkel speaking as a, the Director of Public Works, or is he speaking as the Chair of the School Board, or is he speaking as the parent?
Chair of the School Board.
I see. But you also have, uh, you also wrote this memo, right?
Which memo?
I'm reading a memo that's in the agenda, written March second about the eighteen thousand dollar recommendation.
We're, that's a separate issue.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, great.
Thanks, Gloria. Exciting stuff.
Very much. Don't look so blown. Don't look so long back there, gee. All right. Get back to.
Where are we?
Unfinished business, right?
Your major selectmen's report?
Oh, okay. Any other selectmen's reports? I do. Okay.
One of, uh, one of my constituents was asking with the improvements that are going on down at the marina. It might be optimal time to look at having installed internet access on those pedestals. And from what I understand from this constituent, that wouldn't be a, a high cost item. And it's consistent with what's going on in marinas up and down the East Coast. Um, I know that when I worked down there back in two thousand and sixteen, that office would be flooded with seasonal yachtsmen coming in to access the web. And they'd sit in our office doing their laptop business for hours on end. And if they could do it on the comfort of their own vessel, then um, that might be worthwhile to explore. Maybe we could have the harbor committee check into that for us and, and give us a report on what that would cost. Because I'm sure that the, the yachtsmen that visit our harbor would love have meaningful access to the internet right from their own vessel rather than having to trudge up to the office to send an email or something.
Yeah. That's a good idea. They certainly have that advice, I'd say.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, good.
If we could refer that to the harbor committee, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, who's going to actually defer that to the harbor? Okay.
Good idea. Yeah.
Along those same lines, thanks for breaking my memory. When we had those temperatures way below freezing a couple of weeks ago, uh, there was concern that some of the folks with diesel engines in the harbor didn't have power to warm the engine blocks.
Correct.
And that we might want to look into having a generator. Yeah, those got men and women and talking to Mike, I guess, as a generator here that they're not going to be using in the fire department. So is there any way we could look into whether or not that would be a suitable solution to that? Yeah, great. Anything, anything else?
My argument is some.
Yeah.
Um, I sent an email to the Board of Selectmen asking if it was possible a, a policy could be established, others seeing Zoom has become such a part of our life. If everybody that were on the Zoom call could sign into the chat so that we would know who the participants were on Zoom and also if they were going to participate with a comment to the meeting that would, they would definitely have identified themselves, just as we all have to take attendance here in the room. I'm wondering, have you thought about that?
Well, it's already a policy. It's just that nobody does it. So we have to have people do it. Okay.
So how, how do we make people do that?
We say, please sign in in the chat with your full name. Thank you. How's that?
Well.
Well, I mean, they're.
Yeah, there, I mean.
So are you going to recognize those people that haven't signed into the chat to participate in the meeting?
What does sign into the chat even mean? I would say we need to have, what we need to have is people who have their first and last names in their, in their window. And then we have a list of participants.
See all the.
But he, but, but Kyle.
With Kyle.
And if they don't have a, if they don't have a first and last name, Kyle can send a private message, say, please put your first and last name as, as, as the name of the person participating. And if they choose not to do that, there, there are options, but hopefully we don't have to exercise those options.
But I think maybe the point is at the very beginning of every meeting.
They need to be made aware of.
Right.
Yeah. That's right.
I mean, I've attended quite a few selectmen's meetings, but go to the Warren Committee meetings, Met Planning Board meetings. I never knew that was a policy. So if I'm an active participant in the community, how are those people that are zooming in supposed to know that they should? And John, when you sign into the chat, it's like as if you're writing a note. You just write your name, you know, like Joe Lo, John Woods.
Yeah.
So they, they, we have a list of who's there.
Yeah.
But. Kyle's looking the suit though.
Temple. Yeah. It's all the people that have their full name on their icon.
Right. Yeah. See, that's, I mean, that's, that's the, the list of participants would be plenty for me, but just, I agree. I mean, I do agree. It's just a difficult thing.
These people down and saying you need to sign your name in.
Yeah. No, I would say you send them a private message. That's.
That's what I'm asking.
And then.
Make a private message, everybody.
Please put your name in there. And if they don't, if they refuse, then.
Won't be recognized.
Well, I would say they're, yes, absolutely.
You don't need to block theirs. They're supposed to be recognized by the Chair of this board before they're allowed to speak. So if they indicate that they wish to speak, the Chair can simply say, who is addressing this board?
Yeah.
It's true. It is open to the public. So that's fair.
Okay. So is there a written policy, Darlin, for Zoom attendance?
No, but I think that we, we were in the early running, we were practicing that a little more.
Chairman, I could add something under the call to order where I already have a note, public, please hold comments until recognized. I could maybe put another comment to please, if you're zooming in, if you're signing in through Zoom to please put your full name.
And also it, it's, it's been brought up. People who are zooming in can't always tell who's speaking, so please identify yourself when you're.
Both in the room.
When you're. Going to say anything. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Katrina. All right, so moving on to unfinished business. Okay, item A, consideration of private placement application friendship bench.
Thanks for doing this.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. It was a good report. My only objection, which has been from the start, I don't like stone benches. I think they're uncomfortable and nobody likes to sit on them. So I would prefer to have a regular city bench that we have in the harbor.
But I think the stone, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the stone bench down at the harbor is lovely. I've seen people sitting on it. And as far as like Ponzen, there really isn't much there for people to sit on.
Right. I'd like to, I think a regular bench is all I'm saying, but that's just me. I don't like to sit on stone benches.
Well, I think it was noted that we would, we would move as quickly as we could on this particular proposal while we continued to explore what we would and would not allow in the future. Is that?
I, I'm just saying what I think. I think we should.
So I feel like these types of things to the donor are extremely important. Uh, they can be very time sensitive and we've sat on this long enough. So I feel like in light of our delay and the fact that we do not yet have this policy that I would like to suggest that we grant Mrs. Warhol's, sorry about the last name request as she presented.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh, discussion?
Yeah, I need a special invite.
I just wanted to note that, uh, I am in agreement with Mr. Henkel's memo. I have had occasion to go to Ponzen to look to see for myself if there was a suitable place. And your memo, Brian, points to exactly the location that I thought, well, that would be the perfect place for a bench. So it's adjacent to the, the ramps that we go out. It doesn't impede boating traffic, kayak traffic, foot traffic. It's, uh, it's an ideal location and I think it looks nice there.
But can I, can I make a further comment? I don't want us, in the light of this in my, I agree, we've taken too long with this. We got to get it over with, but it, I don't want us to forget that we need a policy and soon, because this isn't going to be the first time or the last time we're approached with someone who has a really, you know, fervent desire to, to memorialize someone, which is a very human thing, but we, we just have to have some kind of policy. So we're not agonizing over it and, and dragging people around for months, years on end. It's not right, but we got to add a policy.
Absolutely. Agreed. I can just make one clarifying point of there is the current location of a bench. I have the he asked.
Right.
Correct. And then this will be for the, to the left.
Okay.
Yes, to be sure.
Reading your memo, I do exactly where you were talking about.
No, it was nice. Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a good memo.
Very good.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any all in favor? Any opposed? Item B, discussion of the Stanley Lane Streetlight by Captain David.
So I'm coming back to you all from the public comment here, uh, back early winter. Uh, she might work here and you guys and send you do something often to search out what you could do. So it is talk to public works, uh, we can see anything on the lecture. Talked in public works, uh we can seal anything on the electric. Uh there's a shade on the light, they've already repositioned it once, um which doesn't seem to be helping. Uh so I did talk with the the original requesters um in Stanley's, we live a little bit further down, but there is no hole. Between the last one that's in front of the bird's house and the dead. Um so the three options that we, the lights are not dimmable, even manually at the head. Um so really, the only options are available would be to try a a bigger shade. To direct the light down more. There's already a shade on the light that's pretty substantial at this point, but that is one option to do. I don't know if it's gonna rectify the the shining there. Uh we did work with MCN to get a quote on a new utility pole uh further down on. Um Stanley, the brighter way there is pretty narrow uh in talking with the Stanleys. Um they are willing to have a pole on placed on their property. Uh we haven't gone any further than that, but just understanding that it would be down almost behind where it would be following this. Uh that obviously comes with the cost uh or to remove the streetlight altogether. Uh the other end of um Stanley at Sylvan, there's already a pole, a light that's a little bit further. It's kind of close in proximity to the two that are on Sylvan at that point, so um I guess. I bring that back to you guys, so you can talk it through, we decide what you wanna do, and and I've talked to Brian briefly before. Uh and I I think it's gonna come at a town's cost if we we try to do anything at this point. So.
So can we just shut it off and see how it goes?
Uh we could just continue the electricity from it.
Yeah, just see how it goes and see if it's suitable and.
Okay.
If it's a real problem, then we can worry about it.
Yeah.
What you're talking about, just don't have the light?
Just don't have a light on.
Yeah.
Just see what happens, see if it's you get enough light there at night or not.
But the light was put in at the request of somebody, right? So now we're going back to that. I mean, I I like option C as well.
Yeah.
But.
Well, who was who?
I don't.
Who was the quester?
This, I think the Stanleys came because it is a dark street.
Yeah, they wanted a light, we put a light in, somebody else doesn't like.
What what about that? I I went by again to look at, I've gotten several more emails. So um I'm staying on it, but um there that I noticed that that there was, I could see where you did put a shade on it at one point. And it's, but it doesn't seem to be helping. They said it's just like a, you know, searchlight going into their house. But what about that? You mentioned maybe a bigger.
Well, and that would be to come down further.
Yeah.
I think there's, I don't know the exact length of that shade that's on there right now, but I think it's twelve inches roughly. I mean, I guess you could try to go longer than that, but I don't know if that's really gonna.
Gonna help.
To help it. If it's already down that far, I don't know if breaking it down more will help.
Sounds like your sense is that the people that aren't happy with it now will not be happy with it then.
Right.
My gut feeling is fucked up.
Okay, so what about fewer lumens? We went from like three, I think they're three thousand.
Said it's not do.
Or you can't even change the picture.
You're gonna change the whole thing itself.
Oh.
Um and that's something that we talked through with kind of what we're doing with Bar Harbor and. For a lot of the sharing of services, Bar Harbor went with a different light system altogether. Um that have nodes on them that are controllable, and I worked, I talked with Mike at NCM, and our nodes are not compatible with non-searchlights. There was hoping maybe we could put a light on there, get it remotely, because we did turn ours down, I think it's low to ten percent. Uh which has helped some of the stuff in Bar Harbor where people have been complaining about the brightness of the LEDs.
If that. Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, that comes at a whole other cost, cause then it's buying a whole new light, so I think you would be able to. Work control on all the lights for Bar Harbor, and I think that's one of the shared services with the police side of it, that I think that. We bought a light that had a node that was compatible, I think we can get it onto our system. Easy enough to be able to control it.
What what is the, you mentioned that one option would be to put another light further down.
So.
On this, on the Stanley's property. But what's the, what kind of cost are we talking?
Four thousand dollars per pole.
That's right, just hundred forty five hundred and all.
And that's. What was that?
Did you put in a new pole, could you put a dimmable light on that pole?
Uh I think what the the that's the mid one, take the light that's currently in front of birds and put it on to the pole, so there was no additional cost there. But the pole and installation would be.
Yeah.
Four thousand, roughly.
What's the dimmable light cost?
Uh I have to get back to you, I know that the nodes themselves, what, Brian, do you know what the cost of just an LED streetlight? You know, okay, uh I can get that cost and and bring it back to you. I know that the nodes themselves and controllability, that's about two hundred dollars. Just for that side of it, and then it just cost of of one streetlight, so I can get that from MCN.
And I'm not even sure dimmable would have.
Not in this situation, but it is something to think about as we go forward. Yeah.
Wow.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm asking you for the big action, I just more wanted to bring it back to you folks tonight, so. I did talk to Miss her and let her know that we're gonna be discussing it tonight.
Yeah.
And the other thing, I you measured quality on the benches and. Probably we should add something in for policy language to. Prevent this in the future, but I don't know if that's.
Well, I I think one thing Jeff brought up, let when this came up initially was, you know, we just, we get requests. And we pretty much say, okay, yeah, go ahead. You know, we need to really look into it more before we approve new lights. Because they they, some people don't like them glaring into their, well, who would?
Yeah, but I think it was well intentioned because it is a.
Right.
But the location.
The placement is just not right. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Well, do we wanna address that now?
Well, yeah, um.
I mean, what are we gonna just think about it for another?
No. We could just.
I mean, really.
It sounds to me like uh the choices, the ultimately, we're gonna end up with another pole down the road, so to speak.
Literally.
Yeah, or moving that altogether.
Or yeah, so I would suggest just turn it off and see if it's so onerous for the people who requested in the first place that. We absolutely have to put another pole in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And I think if we do, it would be nice to send a notice out to those five people or whatever it is. That are gonna be affected by a new streetlight out by their house to make sure that. Somebody else isn't gonna be upset if it gets moved down.
We need to, we need to.
We can't.
Move more.
Please, everybody. So I.
Yeah.
And I've been in contact with everybody involved there, so I can let them know that we'll.
Thank you.
Just continue service on the light for now and look to the future if it's if there are future requests and people to have it. Place it further down the road, and I I don't know if the Stanleys would put the pole in and it'd be, I don't know. I mean, I didn't even cross that bridge, because I just kinda wanted to.
Okay, great.
Do we need motion?
Uh do we need to vote on that or? All right, so we're voting to.
Shut it off. I would move that we that the that the newly installed streetlight on Stanley Lane be uh turned off.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The uh item C, review of the newly proposed wa- public water supply protection ordinance, which reveals and replaces no swimming and limited. Motor motor vehicle access to great ponds ordinances.
We can get Paul Slack on the on the Zoom call.
Okay. Anybody wanna give us a brief overview of this?
Oh, sure, I can do that. I'm Paul Slack, manager of the Mount Desert Water District. Um what we've done here is simply combine the two previous ordinances into one. All these ordinances are really dealing with the protection of the safe drinking water for the water district itself. To that, we've also added a couple of different things uh to these ordinances. One is. To allow safe installation of ice shacks and that when they're in danger of uh falling into the water. That we have the authority to remove them, have them removed from the ice. Um and the other issue that was addressed here is we've got, we want to limit the ability of people. To access the drinking water in our ponds, and what I'm talking about is people with like fertilizer companies. They like to pump in uh access the water directly, and there's a risk of contamination. So fertilizer companies, seeding companies, et cetera, and we want to limit that to uh the fire department. And the water district itself. The dollar amounts that are listed in this ordinance are nothing that we created. Those are part of the state statute, so the state statute specifies what those dollar amounts are.
Good. I have a question.
Yeah.
It makes reference to specifically Jordan Pond also in here, part of it being in Seal Harbor, part of it is in Bar Harbor. Is this ordinance consistent with Bar Harbor's ordinance?
Good question.
Regarding the management of the water supply. Do you know the answer to that, Paul?
Uh I'm not aware of it being part of Bar Harbor. Um I know that we've got control of the water. The drinking water ordinance that we have are very similar to what they have in Ellsworth. Any surface water uh utility is very similar to this language that we've used here.
My mistake, Paul. I uh it is ponds mixed up. I had a little brain cramp. I was thinking about Eagle Lake. Bar Harbor in the park.
Well, we'd like to include that in our water system. That would be good.
You'll have to talk to the park, Bar Harbor about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
The only thing that we like, we we work with Paul and and completely endorse the ordinance. Uh the one thing with ordinance violations. Uh your attorney does not handle those, so if there is any ordinance violation that we're gonna run into here, that's coming back on the town. Work with the town attorney to prosecute and and do any of the ordinance violation. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that moving forward. I think working with Paul and his group, I think that with police department being in the loop on any violations that may be occurring, I think we can resolve it without.
So if I see somebody swimming in lower headlock, I call you?
You gotta call Paul, but you can always call him. So and I think really the ice shack language, I think really is what the water district was most concerned about and upon. But the the ice shacks, I know there's been some contenting where they notify people, they say they're like, I'm not moving it, the ice is gonna be fine. Then there's been heated debates between whether the ice was safe, whether it wasn't. As long as the water company is reaching out to the police department, we will help any way we can to make sure that ice shacks are removed in a timely fashion. Without getting to the point of people getting summons for having an ice shack on the lake or in the lake.
Okay.
So I think the ordinance, the way that it stands in the language, I think it's good.
Is there a quantitative measure for when the ice is safe versus unsafe?
I think that's determined by water, I mean, um and I think that's some of the. The concerns that have been in the past, and Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think you guys do determine. Amount of grain ball or or inches of ice compared to what the weather's supposed to be.
Well. To, let me address it in this fashion. I think that, you know, we have never fined anybody. We have never taken anybody to court. Um when we simply approach people and advise them, these are the rules, this is what needs to be followed, and we explain it to them. Very rarely do we have any issues at all. We had a problem with one person, one time, with respect to an ice shack. And it was very unsafe. You know, normally, we talk to people, fishermen, and advise them, hey, what's going on? They've already taken their ice shacks off. There's not an issue. We had one person that was not a local person that wanted to go fishing. Uh we had to, we had our police department involved with it, we had the game wardens involved with it. And we did not have an ordinance that strictly said that we had the authority to ask them to remove it, and because of that. We could not get them to remove it. Acadia National Park was involved, everybody was involved. So I think as long as we have something in writing, I don't believe that we've got an issue trying to administer this program. It's simply a matter of having it in writing that gives us the authority to do it. And ninety nine point nine percent of the people, when once they are confronted, total lie.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good.
And we'll vote on this later. Yeah. Okay, thanks, Paul. Okay, item D, nonprofit funding request recommendations.
So. Man, just to start off, um Mr. Chairman, you were asked directly at one point, a couple of meetings ago, whether or not somebody not showing up. For there was, that was part of the new policy, is that then they are no longer eligible, is that?
That's correct.
Correct. So the five people, five organizations on here totaling, I think, eighty five hundred dollars. Are not actually even eligible for approval.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Take eighty five hundred.
Right, which brings it down to two hundred, two thousand dollars and two hundred thirty seven, three hundred thirty seven as requested.
What did you go, sorry, two hundred and two?
It's two hundred two, four thirty seven.
Four thirty seven, yeah.
Which is, you know, again, and then the seventeen point nine percent percent drop in requests is is. Different, I mean, in in some way, because we had some pretty massive requests that we did not apply. We actually, we apart from that sixty five thousand dollars versus twenty seven five for the Mount Desert Chamber of Commerce, we approved one hundred percent. Of the requests last year. The the difference between the requested amount and what we approved is is exactly that that. Whatever that is, thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars.
And we have, um they're, they don't show here, but we, things that used to be considered third party requests have been eliminated from this list now.
Right, right, but I I mean, just looking at where the increase is for this year, it, most of those are 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 being asked for the exact same amount.
Right.
There's really only two or three that that are significantly different, including the Mount Desert Nursery School. The uh the the Mount Desert Historic, the Mount Desert Island Historical Society. Um and then Down East Community Partners, which were asked pretty directly where they came up with their funding, my their their request amounts. Anyway, I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the. Right, it's same page. So. What do we do? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. Make a comment regarding the Steel Harbor Village Improvement Society.
Okay.
Obviously, on a space, it is quite an outlier amongst the group of village improvement societies. Requesting fifty five thousand. Back in, I think, two thousand and ten, they were asking for twenty five thousand. So it's gone up by thirty grand in thirteen years. That improved that level of funding for an employee to mow the lawns, rake the beach, take care of the coverage station, the trails. Whatever, all the different responsibilities that that person has. Um certainly doesn't keep pace with the raises that have been given to our own buildings and grounds, people who are employed by the town. My second concern is that we're funding a position over which we have no supervisory responsibility or authority. Um I had mentioned earlier uh that I felt that it could be a a matter of contracting out of services. Uh and Darlin explained that since we've been doing it for so many years, that it would be like imposing an ex post facto. Change uh in in funding, and I respectfully disagree with that, given the fact that it is reviewed annually. Uh on an annual basis, and because you've been doing it for a long time, doesn't necessarily mean that it's accurate and right. It just, if there's another way to do this, then that's that's great. I have no qualm with the person doing the work. Uh but if that person were on a unemployment basis annually, if you're getting a salary in excess of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um I don't know whether or not the Village Improvement Society, I don't have their budget in front of me, whether they're paying workers' comp for this employee. Whether they're paying unemployment. Like, I I don't have the answers to those types of questions, and I'm concerned that. Um now that I have these questions, I can't just blanketly approve this amount of money. It either, if we approve this, we need to be approving that amount for all the village improvements. If we approve this, we need to be approving that amount for all the village improvement societies based on some yet undiscovered or explained need. Or we need to adjust that amount of money, in my opinion.
I, I would. Jump on board a little bit. You, you all have heard me, a couple of years ago, expressed my same concerns over that and uh. Was essentially told the same, I mean, that, that, at the time, Tony basically explained that, that the services that they provide. Can't be duplicated by our public works department for the same cost, which, you know, it, it may be true, but. Again, like, Morse said, doesn't, doesn't really, to me, justify that. I, I hate to spend money if we don't need to, but I, I do, I had, I expressed the same concerns. Um, about having us, uh, an unsup, uh, we're paying the salary and health benefits of. Of a person who we have no supervisory authority over. I don't know how to change that overnight. I asked that years ago and thank you for asking it again.
Yeah, unfortunately, it always hits us right about this time, yeah, we consider it and it's, it's always a little bit late in the game.
Well, I, I, I brought it up after the town meeting, but anyway, we can bring it up again.
Those, uh, Adam Prell here, those services, uh, the Seal Harbor Village Improvement Society. That's a significant amount of work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
No question, yeah.
I mean, they do a beautiful job. It would cost a lot more because they, they raised, they have a lot of money coming into them from. Individuals who support the V I S. And I think that's how it's possible for us to get this level of service.
Right.
Um, my, but I share your concern. It's an, it's an awkward setup. Um, I do think we should approve it this year, but I think that. With our new public works director, perhaps you could come to us with a recommendation. Um, maybe working with Jake on this to, to talk about what, what other way we could handle this. Um, they've done, they do a wonderful job. The, the, the trails and the beach look great. I mean, they really do and I don't, I don't think, if we take that in-house, it's gonna cost. A lot more.
I already put it on to. And I would, just in terms of annualizing the, the compensation, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
If it would further things along and and perhaps help, uh, maybe it won't. But if we could table that one portion. Of this pending a definitive opinion from the town's attorney. Which would be Mr. Hamilton, to let us know that we are on firm legal ground, that we're not contracting out. That we're not. Dealing with an issue where we're hiring an employee over which we have no supervisory authority. Um, I, I can't agree more with Martha about the work that gets done over there. It's beautiful. It's great. Something about this just is sticky in my craw that. Leaves me with questions that have not been answered since two thousand seven. So.
So we wanna check in to see whether.
If that's a reasonable suggestion.
Labor contract.
Yeah. When, when you assume, and I'm gonna assume it's not, so when are you gonna actually go back, because we're gonna run out of time here. Well, that's why I posed it. I don't know how much time is left in the schedule, Derlin, to. To actually get that done and whether you can just pull out that one item pending. Um, pending that the, um, the opinion. Or if we had to table the, the whole thing. I don't think we need to table the whole thing.
But I think. I'm not sure about this and that. You wanna consult a lawyer, it's fine, but it seems to me when you give money to a. Nonprofit organization, generally, you're giving them the money and they have many expenses. So whether we're actually paying someone's salary. Or we're just giving money to an organization and they're paying the salary, I think that's where the question is.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess the, you're, I, I hear what you're saying and I would say that, so that basically that although we expect them. To continue to mow the, the lawns and rake the beach, we have no recourse if they stop.
Start to hire somebody to do it.
Right, but that, I mean, that's not likely to happen, but I'm just, that's, that's where we're, we're not actually contracting for services. Because we have no recourse if they fail to provide those services.
That's true.
Good.
Jake Wright, my instructor, the only thing I would point out in terms of recourse, uh, is that they do tell us how we're gonna spend the money. And so, you know, in a situation where they stopped doing what they said they were gonna do with the money. I would point to that as potential recourse if we wanted to settle it in, in courts, but hopefully. At that point, but I would just point that out as potential recourse that we do ask how they wanna use the money and if they. You know, stop doing any of the things that they said they were gonna do, um, I, I think we would have, um, some ground to stand on.
Hmm, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
So Derlin, uh, what's the, what is the timeframe if we, like, Rick is suggesting?
You'd have until the thirteenth.
Of March?
Yes. You'd have to come back into a session, you can, I can probably get an answer there, that's what you, you will have to have another meeting.
The substantial money. To move back to the, to the entire list, I would, um. I would prefer if we did not exceed last year's payout. Which means that we might not be able to fund everyone at the level that they are requesting.
That's right.
It is possibility. But shouldn't we talk about individual ones about where, where we might be able to, to trim?
Well, and one of the big ones is, uh, what, the chamber has gone up a bit. And there's been some talk by this, uh, committee, on this board, that, um. You know, we're giving a building to the chamber. Um, and they, they are supported mostly by businesses in town. Do we need to be supporting them at this level?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Lincoln Millstein, um. I, I wanna. I don't, do you know how much businesses, uh, Martha, do you know how much businesses support the chamber? You just said, you just said that, uh, it's mostly supported by their business members.
Well, they gave us the figures, I don't.
According to what I found, and we can. Discuss the accuracy of that, but I think they're asking the town for twenty-seven thousand, right?
Twenty-eight five.
Okay, twenty-eight five. Well. I think they only get twenty-three thousand dollars from their, on dues. I believe that the town is the biggest, writes the biggest check for the chamber.
I think that's correct.
Okay, I mean, so, so I wanna, I wanna correct that. So the taxpayers of Mount Desert is being asked to be the biggest supporter of the Chamber of Commerce and we're gonna go back to Mr. Morse's. Point, which is just because this is what you've done in the past, he's challenging that thought tonight with the, uh. Uh, uh, with the Seal Harbor, uh, V I S. And I would, I would ask you to think about, number one, the Chamber of Commerce, United States is a lot, largest lobbying organization in the United States. And they lobby on behalf of businesses and it's also gotten very political, so. United States senators are now out there challenging. The political positions being taken by the chamber and you can read about Elizabeth Warren and other senators who are doing that. And so is this a, I just ask you. Uh, what, what is the goal of the taxpayer, supporting a business enterprise that is. Politically motivated and. The largest lobbyist in the United States, uh, and the taxpayers are being asked to support it. While their own members don't pay as much as taxpayers, so, so some of their members include Versant. And they include a lot of local Bar Harbor businesses, if you look at their member. So I just asked, I, I just asked you, uh, as a, as a taxpayer, uh, whether that's a good use of my money.
Well. My understanding, you know, and we're, we're, we're pretty small potatoes down here, Lincoln, but, uh. My understanding was that lacking a, a, an, a, a robust commercial base in town. That to do the kinds of things they needed to do, um, they really did require our support. And this sort of came into being during that era where we were building economic development in town. Uh, and that was the goal of that funding was to promote that.
But it stayed at a higher level than it used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you think that's still true, that local businesses need the taxpayer's support? And, and when a lot of taxpayers can't even go downtown in the summer?
Well, can I just say one thing? I was just at the chamber meeting last week, uh, this is Tracy Aberman. Um, one of the things that was asked when they presented their request was, uh, they brought up the fact that. They actually do man and run the building down, down there and they don't do it at a cost to the town. So when I look at that number, I just think of the town as subsidizing. Uh, you know, a staff that they're hiring, they're paying for, um, they're keeping that building open and running. Um, rather than, you know, taking a political position with that money, I think what they're doing is keeping that building vibrant down at the marina.
When was the last time that membership was asked to increase their dues?
I have no idea. I have no, I, I'm a member of the chamber.
Right, what was the last time you were asked to increase your dues?
I don't, I, I don't, but, but what I'm saying, Lincoln, is just that the building is being run for people. Any, any person, not a business member. So they're not, that, that town portion. Could theoretically be saying, like, we're, we're giving that portion so that the, the chamber building can be open.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't forget, Mr. Chairman, Derlin, probably your memory's better on this than I am, when we remodeled the marina. We took the chambers building that had showers in it that they charged the yachtsmen for showers, didn't they? And, and we leveled it and made a yachtsman's building where they don't have to pay for showers. And in return, gave them space down at the marina for their, uh, ticket booth, if you will, their building. Um, so we have to be mindful of that also, that it wasn't just, uh, let's build a new building and give it to the chamber for a buck. Yeah, one thing, one thing which is good and I'm not. Would argue about whether or not we're doing subsidies and things, but I know. If we would probably have to fund ourselves some positions down there, because otherwise. They would be probably up in the town office, asking directions and for maps, so the, the counter clerks will become de facto. Um, you know, Chamber of Commerce.
Visitor Center.
Visitor Center, so one way or the other, uh, I know one of the things they do a wonderful job about. Helping some of the older folks in town get employment there in the summers and things, and people with good local knowledge. So I think, you know, uh, there's a lot of positives, uh, I'm not aware. Of any of our senior citizens campaigning for Versand that was a visitor center, so, uh, it's probably not happening, but they are giving out maps and. Telling about restaurants and attractions and things, so I think they do, I think that's probably not a bad, uh, investment of the. Tax money, say, because we'd be paying it one way or the other, we'd be either funding the positions ourselves. Or having that and it's probably not another function that we need to be taking on at this particular time, although we could. And we would if we have to.
Yeah, but Derlin, wouldn't it be reasonable to ask members of the chamber to pay as much as taxpayers?
Right, I'm, I'm not a member of the chamber and I'm not a business person, so I don't feel qualified to answer.
Well, they, they, their, their revenue is twenty-three thousand that they get from their own members and they're asking taxpayers to do twenty-eight five, so.
I'd be agnostic on that, and Lincoln.
Well, but, you know.
I'd let the policymakers.
It's not being agnostic, it's having facts and what, you know.
Well, can, can I just say, um, doesn't say, I'm not hearing anybody. Sign in, but, uh, on the board, um, but, um, in an attempt to. Hold back this number that we're being asked to spend, could we consider. Keeping the chamber at last year's level, that's just a thousand dollars, but it's a thousand dollars of savings. And, um, it, because I, I feel we should not be. Raising it as much as it's being raised here on the page. Um, so that's my. Two cents on that one. Um, another one that I think we need to talk about is the historical society that's asking for. Fifteen thousand five hundred dollars to paint their bridge. Um, that's a lot of money. It's, I, it's a, it's a lovely bridge, it, it enhances the town, but do we. Is it our job as the town for the taxpayers to pay the entire cost of painting it? I'm not sure it is.
No, it isn't. I, I don't think it is. And in fact, I was here when the historical society first came to the board with their first third-party request. For a fairly small amount of money, um, swearing that they'd never be back. Um, I do remember that. Does anybody else remember that in the audience?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
It was like twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, we've been funding them at twenty-five hundred pretty steadily. Yeah. Um, in recent years and, and I mean, I guess. I, I, I would look in more at the, uh, at the, the different, when I try to decide how I feel about that, I think the bridge itself. Although it belongs to the, the Mount Desert Historical Society. If you ask most of the residents of the town of Mount Desert, it belongs to all of us. And so I think there is a certain level of, of, um, ownership and responsibility that we need to take, to accept. Now, I'm not disagreeing that we, we shouldn't pay for, or we should, whatever, I'm not disagreeing that we can consider paying less than what they're asking. But one of the things that I kept looking at when I was trying to evaluate the, the, these requests was. Their overall costs and their budgets and so on, and, and the thing that struck me from the historical society that. They have total expenses of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars or something and two hundred and five thousand of those are, are, uh. Are, are, maybe I, my numbers aren't right, I'm trying to find them exactly, but our salaries. So, I, and that's not the same with some of these other, like the Mount Desert Nursing Association, some of these other charitable organizations. They have a very small percentage of their overall budget is on, on salaries and more on services provided, so I, you know, I mean. And you look at the, even the Northeast Harbor Village Improvement Society, they're only asking for five thousand dollars and. That's a, that's a modest amount and they do a great job, but they have three hundred thousand dollars in the bank. I mean, they make more in interest than we're giving them, so, you know, the, the Pretty Marsh Historical Society, our Village Improvement Society doesn't have any money. Do we, you know, I mean, those are, those are all things to be considered, I think. Could they, could the, could the historical society trim somewhere else to be able to afford a few extra dollars to pay for some of the? Well, they, they probably, yes, they probably do some of that already, but.
Uh, they do a lot of that and I know you know a lot about grants and the last few years, it's been really tough to get grants. And I'm thinking if we don't support this in some way. Who's gonna come back to the town when the bridge is closed for the season?
Right.
Because it's not safe or it's. Ugly or whatever. I mean, I don't think a lot of people in this community understand. That the town really has nothing to do with that, but yet it is a huge piece of this town and its history and. I agree with you, it's a lot of money, but my hope is, is it's a one-year. Fix, just like, you know, the nursery school needed extra money for something specific this one year. And I just, I feel like, you know, I did look at their budget as well and, and, you know, I think that's a lot of money, but my. My concern is if we don't help that. We're gonna look bad when that bridge, that historical piece of this community is closed, because they can't afford to fix it. And then I think of the Nursing Association, it's a wonderful organization, but over the past several years, it has not been as much of a service. To this community as it has in the past.
Because it's for the whole island, yeah.
Yeah, and it's all about Medicare, it's not about private pay people and call and try to get physical therapy in your home, there isn't anybody there to do it. So if we're talking about service and, and who provides what for the members of this, this town. Are they going to every other town and getting thirty-five thousand dollars? Sorry.
No.
No.
So where do you wanna cut?
Well, I have one suggestion, if we wanna try to be modest about our, you know, the people that, that ask for extra money to repair and, and. I mean, the nursery school and the, and the historical society both asked for increases. I mean, the nursery school and the, and the historical society both asked for increases specific to outlays. If we, we, so the nursing, the nursery school typically gets what? They've gotten a lot, they've got, they were two thousand, two thousand and ninety-two fifty.
They had a project last year too.
So, I mean, I would say, we, you know, similar, when I was thinking about the streetlight, perhaps we offer to pay for half. So we pay instead of the thirteen thousand extra for the historical societies. It's thirteen thousand extra, it was two thousand five hundred typically every year, and then they ask for thirteen thousand extra with, and they showed us the, the estimates and everything, which is more than the nursery school did because they didn't have any, they had no hard numbers. I would suggest we, we tell them, we, we can offer them sixty-five hundred extra and go to nine thousand for this year.
Okay, let's, let's go one by one. Okay, Chamber of Commerce down a thousand, right?
Well, I mean, or, I mean.
One by one.
Chamber of Commerce, how about, instead of to the twenty-seven five previous, how about we match their, we match their dues collection this year, which is twenty-three thousand one hundred thirty-one and twenty-two, according to their records.
Yeah, the Chamber of Commerce was so active and so involved during the whole COVID pandemic. And the amount of work that the Chamber of Commerce did for not just the business people in this community, but for everybody in this community was outstanding. So I just think we need to realize that you may not be a business person, but the Chamber of Commerce is helping everybody. And truly during COVID, they were amazing and constantly advocating and helping and broadcasting and providing information always. Please just think about that. We're not done with COVID.
No, we're not. And if I'm not mistaken, there was the Summer Residents Association raised like two million dollars to support those small businesses in this town. But it was way more than, it's, that's what I'm talking about is that the, the.
But the chamber, the chamber was very instrumental.
And that's terrific, as they should be, because it's commerce. It's, it's not, you know, that we didn't, luckily, there are, you know, summer residents that are invested in having those shops survive more so than the residents of Hall Quarry or, or Pretty Marsh. And luckily, they, they were able to do that without the towns, without having to come ask the town for money. Anyway.
You're suggesting thirty, twenty-three?
Mr. Chairman, Jerry Miller.
Go ahead, Jerry.
We had several meetings with you guys and on our own as the Warren Committee, where these people were asked to come and present. None of these questions got asked when they presented, none of these decisions about changing their ask was put to them, and they're not here tonight to defend themselves. I think in the future, we should probably have a bigger discussion while we're hearing them for the first time. Instead of after they presented and they've gone home, and then we change things.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I disagree with it. Hold on a second, please. I disagree with that, Jerry, and the reason I disagree with it is it's like a grant application, okay? You don't get to go back and, and, and have a discussion with your, you know, your peer review committee or your, 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 you know, what have you.
And, and the point of fact, also, all of those questions that I've just brought up were asked. I asked the Chamber of Commerce how many members they had. I asked the Mount Desert, or the Northeast Harbor Village Improvement Society about their three hundred plus thousand dollars in, in assets. I asked the, we did ask these questions, but, and that was, that was the opportunity.
But the, but the, they weren't sort of told that they weren't likely to get what they were asking.
Well, they've all been told that.
Yeah, but.
I, I just, I'm sorry.
There's no guarantee, Jerry, when you come, when you're running an organization and you come to the town if you ask for money, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get it all. I mean.
I understand that.
If people should come to us assuming that the sky's the limit, you know, there is a limit, and we've just, what?
I, I understand that, I just.
Application, as my compatriot has just pointed out, it says clearly a funding request is not an indicator or guarantee of funding award.
I understand that as well, I just, I think it's a backward process and you know, we're gonna have to hear about all these changes at town meeting.
It's gonna be the least of our problems.
No, I'm sure it is, but, but it always takes up more of our time than it needs to at town meeting.
Yeah, okay, but.
And it's gonna change, that's all.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, first of all, the meeting was posted and I think the agenda was posted. And maybe some people feel like it's just a, it's a given that you're always gonna fund these enterprises and they don't need to show up to defend it. But what are we facing this year in, in terms of a tax increase in this town? I think we're lucky, we're gonna try to avoid double digits, right? It's gonna be a tough year for taxpayers. I think it's absolutely reasonable that you're asking these questions about how we're spending every single penny i- in, in town this particular year, because I, I believe you're gonna have the highest tax increase in decades. I may be wrong, but I know you're working hard to try to do that. And I think organizations that take it for granted, that during this year, that they, they don't have to show up. As Jerry said, they can just assume that you're gonna write them a blank check, I think just doesn't rub me the right way as a taxpayer.
That's, that's not at all what I was saying, sorry.
You say they don't have, they didn't, they don't have to show up. Well, it's on the agenda.
Never mind, we'll do this some other time.
Mr. Mills, Lincoln, the, 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 we did change our policy very specifically this year to that if, if somebody doesn't show up to make their presentation, they are no longer eligible for, for the request. So there were five, there were five people that filed requests for funding that are not going to get their funding. And, and we will hear about that, I guarantee, but that is a, that is a step towards what you're, what you're pointing out. So we, we have done that. If they don't show up, they don't get any money.
Okay, so, so let's go back to historical. What was the figure that you came up with, Jeff? I thought that was a good solution.
Half of the additional request, so half of the bridge was sixty-five hundred plus the twenty-five hundred that we typically have, have funded them and, and haven't really come up with any good reason not to. So nine thousand, nine thousand even instead of fifteen five.
And how about the nursery school, same deal?
Well, I, we don't really have as much of a precedent on the annual, we have a ninety-two fifty for last year, but it had been two thousand every year. So if they're asking for eighteen thousand additional, I would say we give them nine, so eleven total. Is that, does that make sense?
I mean, that's being.
Being fair, and then, yeah. The only other one. The only other one.
SPCA went up, doubled its.
Yeah, and I don't remember, I'd have to look back at my notes, but I don't remember what the explanation was for that.
That was actually a metric from their actual service. Yeah, yeah, that was.
Their expenses were not.
Their expenses.
But that is a.
And what about Donnie's Community Partners?
Well, I would like to, I'd like to keep SPCA at a thousand and not raise it.
That's fair.
Down East Community Partners, they've done twenty-one fifty, they went.
That was the metrics one.
And they answered, I believe Katrina asked the same question of them, and they said they use the exact same metric in every town. And they requested, it made sense what they were asking, it was a reasonable, it was like five percent of the, of the estimated benefit to the town, so I would support keeping that at what they requested.
I agree. Can anybody do a quick calculation and see with these reductions that we're talking about where we come out?
Yeah, you're a hundred and eighty-four thousand nine thirty-seven, which is a of just the ones that are being funded, that would be about a seven percent increase. Now, when you, obviously, the denominator is changing because you took some out, but when you're talking about the increase of the funded organizations, it's seven percent on average. But the new number is a hundred and eighty-four thousand nine percent.
And that's with, with what, what amounts to two special projects with the sixty-five hundred and nine thousand. So that's six, about six thousand more than last year's, when we're, when we're actually funding fifteen thousand dollars worth of additional projects.
And are we gonna look at the Seal Harbor V I S in the next week?
I think we need to come back to that, I guess.
Well, we're just gonna talk to the lawyers.
Right, so should we?
My feeling is we should fund them this year and, and get, get some information starting now for next year, so we're, so we're satisfied with the setup.
So we commit to, to following up on it as soon as, like we did with, like we did with the policy. Last year, we talked about it, kicked it down the road, and we actually followed through this time.
Yeah, but I mean, follow through now, starting now. I mean, maybe, maybe the, the, the recommendation is gonna be keep, stay the course. And maybe it's not, you know? Maybe it's, maybe it's some new system, but I think for this year.
Years and years and years, so.
I think for this year, we should leave it alone. It's my thought.
So I, I won't vote in favor of that, but if the board, if the jury in the board feels that way, that's, that's the way the board feels.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, we, we vote on the total amount anyway. I mean, that's what gets recommended. But, uh. Jake, did you write, what number did you have us for, doing for the, the Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber, I wrote down the twenty-seven five hundred, which was the stagnant, did you want, was the move? Just twenty-three round? That goes to a hundred and eighty thousand four thirty-seven, four point three six percent increase across the.
How much percent?
Four point three six percent, and that's of the, the organizations being considered, not a budgetary.
That's only, it's only a little more than a thousand.
Hundred eighty thousand four thirty-seven.
Thank you.
And you get that as four percent increase? Because we had one seventy-eight eight ninety-five.
Right, so one seventy-eight got reduced down to one seventy-two nine when I, when we took out the five organizations.
Already the eighty-three.
So what I was trying to do was of the organizations that we're talking.
Oh, okay, okay.
What the average increase.
I got you now, I'm sorry. I, I didn't, thank you. Absolutely, yeah.
You got about three thousand to go before we get to last year's.
If, well, if we, I mean, we hadn't voted to do that, but we.
I think we're good. Can I make a motion that we recommend? The figure says we discussed here. And, and I would include the Seal Harbor V I S pending the lawyer's approval. Does that satisfy your problem with them?
Voting on the amount prior to having the lawyer's opinion?
Assuming that we get, we can go back.
I second that.
You bet confusing motion. Did you get that, Heidi?
So we're voting for like, for a one eighty-four or something.
One eighty-four thirty-seven.
I can go back to the ones that changed, just to make sure we're on the same page. Down East Community Partners was discussed, but remained the same at three thousand one eighty-seven. Chamber was discussed and produced twenty-three thousand. Historical Society was reduced to nine thousand, that's the sixty-five hundred, which is half the fifteen thousand plus twenty-five hundred. Nursery School was reduced to eleven thousand, which is two thousand plus half of the eighteen thousand dollar project, nine thousand. And then SPCA was produced back to their prior year amount of thousand, and total on all that's a hundred eighty-four thirty-seven.
Will show numbers be available to the Warren Committee running?
Can I add one more? There was some discussion that I was, I'm not really familiar with the Mount Desert Nursing Association. Did you want any more further conversation on that?
No, but that's something I think.
I want to say one more thing, though, in, in, in our defense about the nursery school, because I mean, it's, it is a wonderful organization and it is important to the parents in this town. But I, one thing that stuck with me when, when it was presented here was that because of the pre-K program at the elementary school, they're having to get kids from other towns. So that I would hope that they would approach other towns as well for the improvements.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a good point.
Hey Martha, I want to understand your, your motion, just to be clear with the facts. With, with regard to the, with regard to the V I S item. So your, your, your motion is to have the, have eaten Peabody, which in the last two years has sued two towns in Mount Desert for an opinion with regard to V I S and is your, is your motion that whatever their opinion is, that, that's the determining factor?
Well, if it's, if there's a legal problem, I don't think, I think we gotta look at it. But if there's no objection, legal objection to our proceeding as we have done for a million years, I think we should stay the course for this year while looking at alternatives for the future.
Thank you, Martha.
So, it's been moved seconded.
So Martha moved with Wendy seconding to recommend the figures as discussed, and that figure total was one hundred eighty thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, including the Seal Harbor V I S contingent upon attorney's approval. All right, I just want.
You should have made that motion so much clearer.
Thank you, Heidi.
Having, having made the motion, seconded it, all in favor? Thank you.
Do we want to skip to the Norristers?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. Northeast Lobster Company LLC doing business as a Norister. Request for liquor license renewal and special amusement.
I would move approval second.
With all favor.
Sorry, Adam.
We could talk about it for forty-five minutes.
You learned stuff, Adam. Sorry.
If you want to go, you want to really go through all, let's, let's. Yeah, review and final votes on warrant articles for May one and two.
Just the green one.
Just the green ones. Be aware that the, the numbers are slightly different than they were last week.
Okay.
Money numbers, the article numbers. Okay, so if you're looking at Article Nine, it might look different.
I'm just looking at what I've got printed, so I'm good, the green, looking at green.
So we're gonna do Article Nine. Charlotte Ornament stated May two, twenty twenty-three in Pendleton, Mount Reserve Public Water Supply Protection Ordinance being acted.
I move that we, what do you do? I move recommend, I recommend passage, thank you.
I would second that.
All favor? Article thirty-one, city inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to sell surplus emergency standby cooler eighty kilowatt generator for the Mount Desert Island Regional School District for a lump sum cost of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. On an as-is-where-is basis, said generator being the same generator that was leased by the MBI High School in town for that for one dollar in September.
Move recommendation, recommend passage, yeah.
All favor? Article thirty-three. Article thirty three. Oh, I'm sorry, Article twenty five.
Oh, yeah.
Shall an ordinance stated May second twenty twenty three in federal short term rental licensing ordinance be enacted as set forth below?
I move recommend passage.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion?
So I provided the package of information into the summary of the public hearing. I'm not sure that there's any. You know, good answer for this particular issue, clearly something that we need to work on as a community and the issues that are related to. Uh both affordability and availability of housing and land use as it relates to the the impact of short term rentals. Uh this ordinance is only a licensing ordinance, all it does is require. People to license their short term rental. Um there are some things that I think as a board you need to continue to discuss, some of which are included in your packet. That have not been fully addressed yet, so I would just.
Include a fee.
Put that out there as part of your.
Yeah.
Discussion, well, that we are that. There continue to be opportunities to discuss that, but it's going to be addressed, have to be addressed before town.
I mean, this is, this is a way to start the discussion.
Yes.
Right.
Um can I speak on this again, again, after fifty minutes?
Go ahead, Tracy, I saw.
Yep, yep, for one, I was wondering why you didn't read the letter that was submitted about. Um an opinion on the short term rental licensing that was in the consent agenda. Um and two, I I just don't think this should be a warrant for this town meeting. There's so many unanswered questions. This should have been a survey to start with, um a accounting of listings on Airbnb and VRBO. Um there were so many steps that could have started this process and to go right to licensing. When people have been using their land as they've used their land and this is not a solution to the crisis in housing. It it just isn't, this licensing proposal is not going to solve short term, uh long term housing issues. And every time people have spoken up against this at every meeting, it has come back as the same. Wording with just things taken out. It excludes so many groups, so many different kinds of people who rent their houses for so many reasons. When I think what we're trying to get at is just. Are there, is there a substantial group of people renting for as a business? And yes, there's going to be a group of people who are renting their homes as a business. But to penalize everyone who rents their homes, which has been being done for fifty years or more on this island. It this this proposal just doesn't make sense to me, and I don't know why we keep pushing it forward as even a. Even a partial answer, even a a beginning of a discussion. If you guys said to me. We're gonna send out a survey to every taxpayer and ask them if they rent their houses for short term rental as the first step, I would understand. But we skipped so many basic voluntary steps and we're jumping right to a licensing proposal. Which every single meeting someone has asked, give us a range for this fee. Are you talking ten dollars or are you talking ten thousand dollars? And every single time, the answer has been, we don't, we haven't done this in the past, so we don't need to do it now. Even though the next meeting, someone stands up and says. I'm really against the idea of you passing something like this or bringing something like this to town meeting. With no numbers attached to it, that that the Board of Selectmen is gonna be in control of all the aspects. Of people's livelihood. I mean, some people are renting to pay their mortgages. And this falls now into the Board of Selectmen's hands to decide on how they make their livelihood. And frankly, it's just none of anybody's business, really. Um because this is not why we have a a rental, a long term rental situation on the island. Even if it's one tiny percent of why, it does not merit a license. So, and I don't know why you didn't read that letter from Brendan McPeak, because he wrote a really thoughtful letter.
I read it.
No, I mean, I I don't know why you didn't read it out to the to the uh audience.
Yes, that's not uh what we do. It's available to the public on the website or. At the meeting, but we never read the consent agenda loud in our meetings. It's just not done.
That was just a misunderstanding. We, the people who wrote the letter thought their letter was gonna be read at at a meeting. They they didn't understand that you would read the letter, but that no one. They thought you could speak, that they were speaking in lieu of speaking at a meeting.
I would also like to say something in addition to Tracy, if that's okay. Um I also am a homeowner on.
Yeah, who is this speaking, please?
Uh my name is Jennifer. Um so I. And I again, I bought my property as a rental. For many, many, many years, and I do feel like there's something.
Yeah, she wants to say who she is, she can talk.
Yeah.
Sorry, my name is Jennifer.
Jennifer, last name, please.
But for confidentiality, I mean, am I able to?
Sorry, yeah, we're sorry.
Okay, well then, Ms. McLean.
Uh Mr. Chairman.
It's McLean.
Just to be uh again, clear on the facts. Uh the motion is for the select board to put this on the warrant. Without knowing any. Um anything about the cost of this program. And if you know what the program is gonna cost, please reveal it tonight, because. I have never seen any cost attached to this program, whether it's. Ten dollars, a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. I know, I know in Bar Harbor. They're asking for a lot more money now after implementing their licensing program. So how much is this licensing program gonna cost me as a taxpayer? Anybody know?
We we don't, and that's a reasonable question, Lincoln, and I'm very concerned about that too, and I guess the my my only reason for approving this is. Cause I think we need to get this ball rolling. And if we kick it down their can, it rode anymore. So I would recommend, and I'll make a motion if I need to, that we keep the um for this first. This first draft, this first year, we keep the licensing to a minimum and call it a hundred dollars.
I don't agree with it.
I I provided my last name. Would I be able to speak? I provided my last name.
Just, can you wait a minute? We're talking. I I I think we should have a more thoughtful conversation than just throwing a number out tonight. I agree that we should have a number before we go to town meeting, but um I don't think we need to. I mean, we just got this, I just got this this afternoon and read through it quickly, um which is it's an excellent. Packet, but it but it, there are some suggestions in, I think we should consider. If you had a chance to read.
I did, I read it all, but I'm, I my understanding was that we have to make all these decisions by next Monday. Well, I don't think so, because you're not gonna bake the price into the. So then you'd have to go to town meeting. What you can do is you can push. You can move to put the ordinance on the ballot, and before you get to town meeting, develop your strike and say, if you pass this, this is what the fee is. You certainly wouldn't want to. That, okay, and I then that makes sense. I just, I I mean, I personally think that it should be much higher eventually, but I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna be able to. We can't have that thoughtful discussion in one day.
But no, and so, but I think we could pass this ordinance, get it on the warrant, and then hash it out in the next.
Have the fee structure before it gets voted on.
Yeah.
When you vote.
And I respectfully disagree. I feel like. This ordinance needs more information before we put it on the floor town meeting, because all it's gonna do. If we can't even have a small meeting with fourteen other people. And agree on this, if you put a hundred people in a gymnasium, there is no way. And I don't feel like I can. Rightfully approve this without more details.
What kind of fee details?
Like, I need fees, like, I agree with some of the things Tracy said. We are a tourist community. We depend on tourism and a restriction on some of these short term rentals will. Exclude an entire category of visitors, and those visitors are gonna go someplace else. And I feel like it's gonna hurt our community. It could hit or hurt our year round businesses. It could prevent them from keeping properties and. This is huge. And. I don't think it should go on the warrant yet.
You understand that the people who are who are renting rooms in their own house or a part of their house that they live in are. Not gonna be subject to this.
I understand that, but I also understand what Tracy's saying, and as a longtime. You know, member of this community with a ton of family property. I don't wanna make the decision to sell a piece of property in my family because I can't afford to keep it. Because I need to rent it to pay the mortgage. And I just feel like there's a lot of people out there, and until we have specifics like fees. Like some of the the things that people have asked in these questions, I'm just saying, I personally. Am not ready to put this on the warrant. I think it's gonna cause. Way too much, there's too many questions that aren't answered.
Rick, go ahead.
I uh. I've been on both sides of this issue, both as a board member, a member of the Luso Advisory Board, and an owner of an LLC that has rentals. And it's my considered opinion that this ordinance, opposed ordinance, is not ready. It is, in my estimation, a solution to a problem that is yet to be clearly defined. I've asked this at several of our Luso Advisory Board meetings. What clearly is the problem that we are looking to resolve by creating yet another ordinance? Our land use zoning ordinance gets thicker and thicker and thicker every year. And when we first formed the Luso Advisory Board, the sole purpose was to review the entire Luso. And eliminate what was passe, what was conflictful with other issues. And here we are at it again, we're going to create an ordinance that doesn't have a clearly defined problem to address. So. Painting with a broad brush, it needs a lot more work in my estimation before it is ever put to the floor of town meeting for a vote.
So I agree that the, we have a lot of ordinance, however, I would say that. This has come up because this is a fairly new issue. Um the issue of people renting their house and going to camp is one thing, and we've always had that, and I don't think we want to interfere with that. But the I think we can all agree that the complexion of our. Year round communities has changed a lot in the last twenty years, and certainly in the last ten years. And one small part of that is the. Burgeoning um ever expanding number of. Short term rentals, which do, you know, they may enhance us as a tourist destination, but we're more than that. We have um a history here and that many of us enjoy. Of having a a strong. Closely knit year round community. Um with our library and our schools and our neighborhood house, and these things are are important to many of us. And as one by one, houses have disappeared, summer residents have bought them and used them. For a few months in the summer, people have bought them and making a mint by renting them by the week. For some for three thousand, four thousand, five thousand dollars a week. I don't think, even if we charge three hundred dollars a year for a license, it's gonna hurt anybody there. They're making a lot of money. Um and I don't think we, any of us have an intention of harming. The people we love who live here year round, who need to rent their houses out to pay their rent, to pay their ta- their uh taxes. But I think many of us are concerned. About the way that our communities are changing, and this is one small way we can at least measure what's happening. This isn't, this isn't, we're not saying you can't do it, we're saying we wanna know who's doing what. And we wanna make sure that these rentals are safe. And we wanna make sure they're not driving the neighbors crazy, and I think that's perfectly reasonable. And I think many of the people that object on the uh grounds of, you know, freedom and don't poke into my business and all of this. It comes down to dollars and cents.
Can I be able to speak now?
Yes, who's speaking?
Hi, my name is Jennifer McLean. So I just wanna say that it very much feels unconstitutional. It feels like the town is including like intentionally pursuing a plan to solve solving a house crisis. And that basically the policy is to have homes being sold sit on the market longer and eventually lose value so that a year round person can buy it. But this actually takes money out of the pockets from everybody in the community. The short term rental owners issue for the lobsterman that hopes to retire and move to Florida. He's never gonna see the true value of his house if you're artificially trying to depress the prices of homes to help a quote unquote housing crisis. So this is a community issue that everybody should pay attention to. Also, I feel that. As I stated earlier, when I purchased my house, it was a rental for many, 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 many years. And I feel like every homeowner has the right to its continued use. So I just, I don't know the realities of that, but it it feels like off. Uh if you have curiosity about what goes on at rentals and what people are doing with their homes, you can certainly do it with a survey. You don't have to do it with a license. As far as safety issues go, you have to have safety issues in place, safety precautions covered, or you can't get an insurance policy. So that's already covered and anything beyond would just be redundancy. As far as annoying neighbors, the neighborhood nuisance, that's a law enforcement issue. If you're having bad renters come and stay at your house, which I don't think is in anybody's that's renting's interest. Then that's something that needs to be taken up with local law enforcement, and those are certainly not the rental unit owners that you're gonna get through to with a license. Because if they don't care enough about the community to wanna cause a disruption in the first place, not that they're guests. Anything with licensing, they're not gonna care about either. So I think you need to look at all of the layers of this and really articulate and figure out what this is all about. If this is to solve a housing crisis, this is not the way to do it. It doesn't feel constitutional on somebody who has a right to a continued use. If you want to implement new licensing. To new homes that are recently being sold as of the date you vote this in place going forward, that's one thing. But for all of the families on the island who have been renting their properties. Before this discussion, before this vote, I don't think it should be applicable to them. It just doesn't feel right. Any new. Law or vote or jurisdiction or license should take place from that date voted on going forward. Um not go back in time. And that said, you know, reading articles about what's going on in Bar Harbor, there was a woman who missed the vote. Or missed the licensing deadline because she had COVID and was denied a license. And then went before the board to try to get it appealed, and they couldn't give it to her. And her family's been renting for years and years and years and years. And you know, like the one woman had stated earlier. This is people's livelihoods, and in some cases, this is what their family tradition has been for many, many years, and if it's a house shared among siblings. On the island, maybe it's the only way they can afford to keep the house between the family and not sell it. So there are other other loopholes, other avenues that need to be explored within this. Um and you know, tourism is huge on the island, and that's something to be appreciated for. Um that's what makes M D I so great. Um and the short term rentals certainly help contribute that. And uh we personally are year round rentals, so we bring a lot of people to the community in the winter. To keep places like the Norrister open, um you know, keeping thriving, we're giving money and business to Hearth and Harbor. All of the beautiful places on the island that stay open all year round, so it's something to consider. Um I do hope that you will listen to my comments and hear my comments, because I do think they're important, not just for short term rentals. But for everybody, every homeowner on the island, this is going to impact them dramatically as well as restaurants and businesses that are year round.
Right, thank you. We ready to vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, three to two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you would, would you scan your, the the people that are zooming in? I had my hand up. Before you voted.
Who's this? Bye, Tony. Hi, Tony.
We can't.
You need to put the hand-up function of your Zoom. Then it does.
Never had to, never had to.
We always should have.
There are a lot of people on.
Oh, we should've, could've.
He did have his hand up the whole time.
I saw Tony's hand.
Well, we can't see Tony at all. That's why there's a function on the, on the Zoom uh, interface that says raise hand.
But I can see him.
That's great.
Does he wanna talk?
Tony, you wanna say something?
That's moot point now, but did, you said, John, three to two. Did it pass or fail?
Yes.
I, I, yeah, I'll say something. I agree with most of what Tracy said, the lady Jennifer. And uh, with not knowing the cost, um, you never should've approved this to go to town meeting. With cost to be determined.
Well, the cost, my understanding is, and this was my objection, I agree that the cost will all be outlined before it gets put to the town.
That's right.
But it's still.
When people do something meaningful at town meeting, there will be a price there.
I, I agree.
Excuse me?
No, I just said when people come to town meeting, they could, they'll see and beforehand, they'll see a price when there's one available.
Well, I, I think this process here this evening is, is a meaningful process, John.
I didn't say it wasn't. Okay? All right.
We did thirty. Sorry, thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Article thirty-three, to see if the town of Mount Desert will vote to accept Patterson Hill Road exclusive of Clubhouse Way serving the Patterson Hill subdivision, as it is defined below and subject to the conditions set forth below.
Recommend passage. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Article thirty-four. See if the town of Mount Desert will vote to accept the existing private sandberry sewer collection and conveyance system serving the Patterson Hill subdivision, as the same is defined below and subject to the conditions and requirements set forth below.
Move fashion. Second.
All in favor? Article thirty-seven, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to transfer the balance held in the police training cost reserve account four zero four zero one zero zero dash two four four zero five to the police capital improvement reserve account four zero four zero one zero zero dash two four four zero five.
Move to recommend passage.
Second.
All in favor? See if the inhabit, article thirty-eight, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert vote to transfer the balance held in the assessor capital improvement reserve account four zero two zero five zero zero dash two four two zero six to the assessor revaluation reserve account four zero two zero six zero zero dash two four two zero seven.
Recommend passage. Second.
All in favor? Article thirty-nine, shall the town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to pay for professional technical services, including but not limited to topographical survey, design, permitting, and bidding services for improvements to portions of the town's sidewalks and curbing, with all sidewalk locations totaling approximately four thousand one hundred and sixty feet and collectively referred to as the project. And to further authorize the select board or designate to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note to the town, which may be cal- callable and to accomplish the project. Said improvements shall include the following segments. See appendix for maps.
But move, move to the, to my passage.
Second.
All in favor? Articles forty. Will a town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay for professional technical and construction services, including but not limited to site survey, design, bidding, and construction services for renovations of the two existing town-owned tennis and pickleball courts. With said renovation to provide two fully functional tennis and pickleball courts and further to authorize a select board or it's designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note to the town.
We have discussion after the motion in a second?
Yes.
Move recommendations to passage.
Second.
Yeah, discussion.
I, I just, uh, this, this figure jumped off the page at me, and I don't know if I hadn't been paying close enough attention. But is, it, it, I'm, I, I'm hopeful that this, these courts, I mean, this is a, a reasonable cost, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, it seemed like an awful lot of money. And I don't live in Northeast Harbor, so I don't know, you know, to what extent the community, the residents of this town benefit. It just, I just wanna make sure this is something that people aren't gonna be like, what? There are tennis courts? You know, and I mean, I don't know anything about building tennis courts. It just seems like an awful lot. We can put four thousand feet of sidewalk in for fifty grand.
That's not through construction.
Okay, fair enough. Could you?
Not through construction, that's through design. This is, uh, we had two comparable projects that were going on on the island at the same time, and so I got the bits received for those two comparable projects. And so this is coincident with that same amount. That was, so the, the, the high school renovated courts there, and there are two new courts going in, in the southwest hour through, never ask, or not, excuse me, throughout the progress.
Okay.
So we had, we had comparable estimates. Uh, so we were pretty confident in the number that we put together.
Okay, in the renovation of those two courts. This is for here.
This is right here.
Okay, uh, how is that gonna uh, impact the skating rink and so forth? Are we gonna improve them so that they can they can support a skating rink for longer, or is there a benefit?
Well, for, for right now, the skating rink can be placed there, but there is a pretty significant difference in elevation from one end of the task course to the other. And so there's a difference in height of the liner on that skating rink. So going forward, that.
So that will fix that.
Yeah, level. The insulation for the skating rink as well.
And, and it, 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 putting all this money into the town votes, to put all this money into the pickleball, the, the and they, they wanna keep going with the skating rink, is that gonna hurt it after we put all this money into it?
I don't, I don't anticipate that it would. I don't think there's any issue with putting that, that rink on there for a short period of time over the winter time period.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what, I worked with Brian on this, that the cross-section of the new courts will be sturdy enough to hold a rink. It'll, it'll be, it'll be, uh, it'll have what's called geotextile, remove two, couple of feet of the material that's there now. A stabilizing blanket, so to speak, will go on that, then two feet of, of, of good gravel. It'll, it'll be better than it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and when was the last time these were rebuilt, or was it the first time, you don't?
Million years.
So, Tony, do you remember?
At least twenty-one years. Not my time. And I've been involved since eighty-seven down here, and I've never seen them rebuilt.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I just, I'm trying to ask these questions because we are trying to tighten our belts in all areas. And so, I mean, if, if, if it lasts twenty-one years, that's ten thousand dollars a year. Right? Is that right? Yeah, um, and so, and, and so how many, do we have any idea? How many, I mean, do people, is there consistent usage? How many people actually use these? Or are they a benefit to the town that's worth that amount of money? And that's all, you know, that's, those are just the questions I have.
In, in my opinion, it is, it is Jeff.
Can I, one point on the political question about, like, you know, the Northeast Harbor, all the country. These articles are presented in a separable fashion, so all of these projects, people can come in, pick and choose at town meeting. They're set up as separate articles on purpose. We didn't include it as one big bonding article with all the projects defined so that it was really easy to separate them out if people decided that they didn't like this particular project, but wanted to find the other.
Fair enough. And I mean, part of this is just for my edification though, too, because between now and town meeting, when the warrant gets published and people are going, what's that all about? I'd like to have some answers to, to the questions that I might get. So, I, it, do, do we have any, is there any record anywhere of, like a login of how many people use it? How many, uh, no?
We used to, they, they used to rent those, but now they're free to the public.
And there, but you have to sign up for, and we don't keep track of that.
My office faces tennis courts, and I see it down there. Awesome.
I've heard that. I just, I just wondered if there was any hard data. That's all. Okay, thank you.
I think we also need to remember, if we want to continue to be a destination for yachters, we've got to provide something for them. And anyone that's coming in on a boat, that may not be a member of the tennis club, is going to be able to use these courts. So that's a really important thing. Plus, the nursery school or the neighborhood house will be able to use these courts as well. And they do use them. They bring their kids down. The school uses them. So they are
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any more discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, pickleball is like the fastest-growing sport in the country. It's skyrocketed to millions. It started with people my age, and now it's dwindled down. It, it's big time now. It's a lot of fun.
Definitely a, uh, kind of a cool thing. All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes, we are.
Yes, good. All in favor? All right.
But you know.
No?
No.
Cause they're gonna be asked at home.
Yes.
All right, article four, forty-one, shall a town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general bonds, obligation bonds or notes of the town in a principal amount not to exceed, exceed seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to pay for professional technical and construction services, including but not limited to topographical survey, design, permitting, bidding services, and construction for improvements to three existing town-owned parking lots. And to further authorize the board of selectmen or it's designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to accomplish the project.
Recommend passage.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Yeah. Article forty-two. Shall a town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars to pay for professional technical construction services, including but not limited to topographical survey, design, permitting, bidding services, and so forth. Um, of the relocation of a portion of the town's existing sanitary sewer infrastructure, consisting of approximately four hundred feet of sanitary sewer pipe, manholes, and associated appurtenances to complete the relocation work in general conformance with industry standards for such work. And to further authorize the select board or that's designated to execute any and all contracts and documents and do any and all things necessary or convenient to issue the bond or note of the town, which may be callable and to accomplish the project. Said work is located in the village of Stonesville within the main department of transportation's right-of-way of state route three one ninety-eight. And said relocation shall be in accordance with the MDOT requirement to do so with the town's expense, all in conformance with section thirteen. So on, so forth. Tony, did you write this?
Yes, a lot of it.
We can tell.
Don't worry, I'm, I'm fizzling out.
Don't, don't.
More recommendations for passage.
A second.
Could I? Yes, so this is the, I mean, I heard Redstone, but this is so that the bridge that needs to be rebuilt by this day, we have to move our sewer stuff, and we have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Twice, right. So, okay.
It's awesome.
They're, they're gonna build a bridge, but our sewer is in the way.
Yeah.
On the bridge now.
Fair enough. That's, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I pulled out of the, yeah, all that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all in favor to be, yeah, uh, good, okay. Article forty-three. You know, a town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue a general obligation bond or note to the town in principle amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to finance construction, contract administration, inspection, instruction services associated with drainage improvements to the Beach Hill Crossroad, the road, in the general area where Denny's Brook crosses under Beach Hill Crossroads. Said improvements to be in conformance with the main department of environmental protection, stream smart program requirements, and with said repairs to include but not necessarily be limited to replacing two corroded metal pipes with a concrete box culvert.
Yeah, move to recommend passage.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Works it me. I already asked about the three hundred and sixty thousand dollar pipe.
Article forty-four, shall a town of Mount Desert be authorized to issue general obligation bonds or notes to the town in a principal amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the finance construction-related services, including but not necessarily limited to instruction contract administration, inspection, and construction services associated with improvements and repairs to approximately two hundred lineal feet of erosion of the Seal Harbor beach shoreline.
Yeah, okay. Recommend passage. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Article fifty-four. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to transfer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the undesignated fund balance account, one zero zero dash three eight three zero zero to reduce the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four tax commitment.
Recommend passage.
Second.
All in favor?
Keep up the good work.
Article fifty-six, to see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and or appropriate as revenue through excise taxes, service fees, and miscellaneous sources for the twenty-three, twenty-four town budget.
Select board recommends one million nine hundred sixty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars in ISO move.
Second that.
All in favor?
The reason for that change was investment interest in the original draft is a little bit overstated based on uh, some preliminary numbers that then got revised, so we reduced that down and increased, um, the, and the checking interest a little bit, and then, uh, the other component of that was the increase of the fund balance after kind of getting some additional numbers and looking at, uh, where we are, uh, as a note on the fund balance. For years and years, we've created budgetary deficits using that article, and most years end up actually adding to the surplus, or, you know, maybe, you know, the example twenty twenty-two, the preliminary numbers, we tried, we tried to knock it down five hundred thousand. It looks like it's gonna go down maybe a hundred thousand. So we're consistently way under, so the surplus is getting bigger as these articles are trying to knock it down. And so the, the proposal is to get a little bit more aggressive with, with the fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go, let's go. Article seventy-one, see what some of the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to raise and appropriate for Department eight fifty-one third-party request agencies for the twenty-three, twenty-four town budget.
We have a new number.
Yeah, but we are gonna contingent upon what Derlin finds out from our attorney.
So we don't, we're not gonna, we already.
Gonna vote on this right now.
Uh, you're gonna have to come back for a special meeting.
Yeah.
You can vote on it contingent upon.
But not that, not the number that's here. The number was, no.
One eight.
One eighty.
One eight.
Eighty-four thirty-seven, I think.
Yeah, so we wanna put that in?
Yeah, one eighty-four thirty-seven.
Four thirty-seven.
And then we don't, we didn't break it out, like it's highlighted here either. I mean, but Jake, you have it, the breakouts by, by the type of organization.
Uh, not immediately, that's not the format that I was.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
But yeah, I can go back and amend it as, like, per the discussion.
Yeah, okay, we're just voting on the whole recommendation.
I would, I'll recommend that we, uh, vote contingent to the, the legal opinion on the one hundred eighty thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Second that.
Good, all in favor? Article seventy-three, to see if the inhabitants of the town of Mount Desert will vote to increase the property tax levy limit by five hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Chairman, that number, you know, need to be revised.
Chairman, that number may now need to be revised with a change in the service groups. Uh, I calculated a reduction of twenty-two thousand in appropriation. So we will reduce the L D one article by twenty-two thousand, so.
Five sixty-five.
Need to raise the limit by five hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five.
Can you say that number again, Kyle? Sorry.
Five hundred sixty-five thousand?
Yep.
Seven hundred and seventy-five.
Thank you.
Yeah. Were you using the?
Okay.
Recommend, uh, move that we recommend passage.
With the amended.
With the amended amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Consider authorizing, we're about the new business now, item B. Consider authorizing up to eighteen thousand dollars to be spent from the buildings and grounds reserve account. Four zero five five two zero zero dash two four five seven one. With a current balance of thirty thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, to fund a feasibility study of building a salt sand building as described in memo from public works director Ryan Hankel dated March two.
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Item B. Public space special event application, M D I Farmers Market Northeast Harbor Village Green Thursdays, nine AM to noon from June twenty through September seventh. All in favor? Public space special event application, help portrait M D I Seal Harbor Village Green Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, eight to noon.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
May help portrait down publicly, thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Uh, item F, consider request for appeal category one and category two details as established in two thousand thirteen. Of the police outside detail compensation policy.
Move approval of the request.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Consider requested increasing our standard outside detail row, uh.
Yep.
Consider request to increasing our standard outside detail rate to one hundred dollars an hour with a three-hour minimum charge to the customer and increasing officers' pay. To seventy-five dollars an hour with a guaranteed three-hour minimum beginning. Uh, fiscal year twenty-four to the police outside detail compensation policy.
Move approval of the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
That, I know it's charged, does that include things like? High school basketball games and things like that?
Yep.
I just, uh, cause that's kind of, that's kind of. Have an impact on some, okay. Oh, thank you. That's what I wondered about.
Cause really, and I can speak for this, if, if we don't do something and raise their rate, we don't have police coverage. So as much as I hate to say yes, I.
No, I think it's good. I mean, the three-hour minimum is fair. I mean. Why? What isn't?
That's a best, that's a true statement.
They get a hundred and one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they were no good to me either.
All right.
Yeah, item, we didn't, we didn't vote. Okay, all in favor? Uh, item H, request authorization to pay Norwood Delayden Sons for four thousand eight hundred dollars to repair. Work from the December twenty-three, twenty twenty-two storm. Funds to be taken from the Seal Harbor Doxy Act, the reserve six four one zero two zero zero dash two four six zero zero. With a balance of eighty-six thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Move approval, second.
All in favor? Item I, consider accepting assignment of miscellaneous equipment related to the skating rink by gift from the town of Mount Desert Community Development Corporations. And authorize Derlin Long Town Manager to sign the necessary documents to facilitate the assignment.
We vote. There, one of the donations is hockey sticks. And I just got to point out that it does slightly increase your exposure by accepting the hockey sticks. It's not a significant, in my judgment. Uh, problem, but.
Do we have a place to keep them?
Oh, we can buy the place to keep them.
What, what do you mean? Because they're dangerous?
Well, it's somebody whacks a wheel over the head with a stick with the pound gives, gives out. I mean.
That can be said for sure.
It limits your exposure, it, it does, it increases the exposure, but in my judgment, not a significant amount.
We did decide to exclude the, the donation of skates because of this, for the same concern about the, the exposure.
The skates are probably more dangerous.
Yeah, I. Okay. Yeah, we'll take them. Move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Famous last words.
Yeah.
Item J, consider accepting additional monetary gifts of four thousand dollars from the town of Mount Desert Community Development Corporation. To be used for skating rink maintenance.
Move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor? Item K, consider authorizing the Mount Desert Regional High School to grant scholarships of three hundred dollars. From the Reynolds Trust Fund and one hundred dollars in the Stanley Trust Fund, as described in memo from Finance Director Jake Wright.
Move authorization, second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah. Uh, item L, consider authorizing the allocations of ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents. From the expendable income balance of the Stanley Trust to Mount Desert Elementary School Department budget. The offset costs associated with care, maintenance and improvement of the infield of the Frank F. Stanley Athletic Field. Described in memo from Finance Director Jake Wright.
Move authorization.
Second.
All in favor? What can you do with ninety-five dollars?
Yeah, you can't build a tennis player.
And it's, it's very specific and, and a hundred dollars or whatever in nineteen sixty that it was given probably mattered.
Okay, any other business? Okay, trailer is warrants.
Oh, yeah.
Down invoices, AP twenty-three fifty-seven in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? State fees and payroll benefits, AP twenty-three fifty-five, AP twenty-three fifty-six and town payroll, P R, payroll, P R twenty-three twenty-one. In the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents.
Move signature.
Second.
All in favor?
One abstention, please.
School invoices, school payroll, school invoices, A P oh nine, school payroll, P R eighteen. In the amount of one hundred and seventy-one dollars and three hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Move acknowledgement, second.
All in favor? Right. Uh, motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?